Okay, I would like to call the reorganization/regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 7:07. And we'll take roll. Mr. Capuzzi.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Ms. Dobbs.
Here.
Mr. Feardamundo.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Mr. Montessor.
Here.
Ms. Phillips. All right, everybody's in attendance. Our first item, or our second item, is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Goodbye.
Okay, moving on to the reorganization portion of our meeting. Do we have nominations for a chairperson for 2023?
I would like to nominate David Shannon.
I'll second that nomination.
Any further discussion, any other nominations? No, I will call the roll. Mr. Capuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon. Ms. Dobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Feardamundo.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Montessor.
Yes.
And Ms. Phillips. All right, the motion passes seven to zero. With that, I will turn the rest of the meeting over to our chairperson, Mr. Shannon.
I would first like to, I'd first like to thank Angelo Capuzzi for his service as chair. They say there are no indispensable men, but Angelo has come about as close as he can to being indispensable. I won't pretend to fill his shoes, and I'm very happy to say he will remain on our commission and remain active.
Thank you.
For Angelo. Thank you for your service. The next item is the further nominations for candidates for vice chairperson. I would like to nominate Maggie Dobbs.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? Any other nominations or discussion? Hearing none? Take a vote.
Given that there's no other discussion or nominations, do you want to just do all in favor?
Aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you.
There are nominations for secretary.
Who would like to be secretary? Anyone?
Okay, and I'll nominate Jack Garrett.
I will second it because I sat next to him that last year.
I accept.
Saw him making great notes.
This is cursive readable? A second?
Yes.
I do my notes digitally.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the last item is the motion to appoint a scribe for year 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Marge Buchanan as our scribe for 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Do you accept? Okay.
Margey, congratulations. It's our new scribe, it's our continuing scribe. Next is, we'll entertain a motion to set the following as the calendar for 2023 for the Planning Commission.
I move to set the calendar as described in our agenda with the dates listed.
And for the record, that's the second Thursday of each month. I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries and the calendar is as set.
I'm sorry, actually, I do have a question. We used to meet twice a month, and we didn't have any discussion about how this is going to be once a month. Would we be willing to meet on and off series if there are critical projects that township residents are requesting approval on?
If the need arises, it's not, we haven't done it since you've been on board, but occasionally we'll have a special meeting in the event that something has to happen within a certain timeframe. So that option's still available, but I believe the township felt that, given the number, you know, forget about the comp plan for a minute, given the number of applications things we have, we could easily do business at one meeting a month versus two. And it gives Kelly and staff a little bit more time to get ready for meetings, it gives Chuck a little bit more time to review plans and get his review letters out to us sooner than the day before, whatever, so.
I mean, I agree with that, but I just would like to make sure that there are no residents or applicants that feel like they're under a constraint because of the Planning Commission's schedule.
Jack, I've been doing this for a long time, and I'll tell you, you can count on your, on one hand, the number of townships that have two Planning Commission meetings a month.
Okay, very good.
Even Lower Marion only has one Planning Commission meeting.
I'd like to, shall I say want, there out loud, that I'm not, as I sit here, understanding what the status of the comprehensive plan is, however, that is something that we will be dealing with during the course of this calendar year. I would imagine that that second Thursday, or the fourth Thursday of each month would be an appropriate time to take that up and separate it out from the work of the committee in the first, the second Tuesday, or Thursday, I mean.
If the need arises.
That motion is carried. Has there, is there any discussion as to time that the meeting shall convene? In the past, we've been meeting at 7:00 PM. We could continue at seven, or we could change it to another time if people would like to meet at 7:30, let's say. Any discussion of that?
I think seven o'clock is probably better because we had had meetings in the past that ran long, and I wouldn't want to push them a half an hour later.
I agree, I think seven o'clock is a good starting time. It gives people opportunity to go home, have dinner, and come here on time without pushing it too late in the evenings.
Good, it's seven o'clock.
Kelly, most of the other boards meet at seven, don't they?
Yes, with the exception of the zoning hearing board. But a number of years ago, or a handful of years ago, the Board of Commissioners did request that all meetings begin at seven. So sticking with that is probably our best, best option.
All right, I'll hear a motion to set the meetings to convene at 7:00 PM.
So moved?
Aye.
All in favor of the meetings convening at 7:00 PM, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. All meetings will be 7:00 PM on the dates as indicated in the agenda, which is the second Thursday of each month. Next item on the agenda is-
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt you one more time? There is-
Point of information or personal privilege?
There is also a historical commission liaison that the Planning Commission, and I'm not sure exactly how the whole thing works, but for the last two years, I've been serving, prior to my joining the Historical Commission, that Jesse Pointon was the Planning Commission representative at the Historical Commission, and I didn't know if that's something that we need to reappoint on an annual basis. But I know that I went to the Historical, first Historical Commission meeting, and Kelly was surprised that I was there because we hadn't had our reorg first, but then I don't see it actually on this agenda, so I don't know if it's something that we need to discuss.
I apologize, it's not something that we've ever actually put on the agenda, but probably something that we should. So yes, the Planning Commission does require, I'm sorry, the Historical Commission does require one of the members to be a Planning Commission member as well, as a liaison. So it's not something that we, I think we've generally had the commission vote on, just an internal discussion of who wanted to be the liaison for that board, but they do meet the third Monday at seven o'clock, generally, sometimes Tuesdays because they tend to run into a lot of holidays. So if anyone is interested in being that liaison, please, you know, feel free to speak to me, or if everyone wants to vote on it, that's fine, too. Or we can just talk about it.
I had volunteered when Angelo had sent the email out.
Okay.
So I can still do it.
Everybody else, nobody else is fighting for the position?
If anyone else wants it, I will, let them have.
Great, Julia, I'll put you in touch with the Historical Commission.
Okay, thank you.
I guess it up.
So is that a formal appointment?
Not really, but we can make it formal if you'd like to.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appoint Julia Phillips as our liaison with the Historic Commission.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Julia, congratulations. You'll serve us well.
Does this mean we have to put it up, an amended agenda? Technically, this is an amendment to the agenda.
New business.
I just worked down number seven, new business.
New business? Okay, we'll cover this under new business.
Sure.
Okay.
Moving on to the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program. Have someone to report on that.
Yes, I can do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So this board probably realizes there's been a couple grants that the township has applied for in the past, and they all require the Planning Commission to weigh in on it, make sure it's-
Could you state your name and title on the record, please?
I apologize.
It's okay.
Chuck Faulkner with Penone Associates Township Engineers. So moving forward, the grants typically apply or require the Township Planning Commission to weigh in on the fact that it is consistent with planning objectives of the township and more specifically the comp plan. So this grant here deals with sanitary sewer, and just to give you a brief overview, it is, what has happened is last year, back in late, late summer, there was an SSO, a sanitary sewer overflow, in Naylor's Run, adjacent to Valley Park, and I believe everyone probably can relate to where that is. It was picked up by a resident, luckily, and the township was notified, they were able to get out there and address the situation, bypass pump the flow and clean up the creek, notify DEP, and then we came back later, a couple days later, and put in a liner, a spot liner, in there to address the leak temporarily, knowing that we would have to do something in the future. So between then and the time we were debating on what needed to be done, this grant came out, the Small Water and Sewer Grant, so the township decided to apply for that. So what's being proposed here is, as you can see from some of the pictures, the pipe goes right through the creek, right through Naylor's Run, from one side to the other. It's exposed in the creek, and you will see that there's a piece of, there's concrete in the creek, and then there's a short section of pipe. And that transition from that short section of pipe to the piece where there's concrete, that's where it broke. That's where it separated, right there. And the reason being, what's under that concrete is what's called vitrified clay pipe, the older pipe, that's typical in the township, and the other black pipe you see exposed is a cast iron pipe. So that joint kind of worked its way loose and separated. Having said all that, what the township wants to do is to go in here and ultimately just reconstruct this whole sewer line, change it all to ductile iron pipe, which is much more robust, lower it as much as possible, ideally under the creek if we can, but if we can't, lower it as much as possible and reinforce it, so it will have some level of stability for the high flow storms. And also, I know Mr. Capuzzi brought this up, you know, there's other options there, like there's siphons that can be done under the creek and everything, we'll certainly take a look at that. I don't know if it's feasible or not, but that's something we'll explore, too. But the bottom line is to replace that sewer, place it with a much more robust pipe, and get it as far as possible under that creek. And just to give you an idea of flows to that, that's what you see in the Township Sewer map, which is the red and green map, and it's outlined in blue, is the proposed area, and it's all residential that comes to that point, but there's, if I remember correctly, there's about 250 to 260 residents that actually go down through and into that pipe, so it's a good bit of flow. So that's the, that's the short story. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Chuck, out of curiosity, the diameter of the pipe, when you say a robust pipe, you mean a larger diameter?
No, I mean material-wise. We're going to probably go to a ductile iron pipe, that's rigid pipe as opposed to clay pipe, which is, you know, not so rigid and somewhat brittle, and has joints every maybe four to five feet. We'll go to a ductile iron pipe and eliminate a lot of the joints, and it will be much more stable.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
What was your reference to siphoning?
There's some design that can be done, which can actually bring the pipe down and under the creek and then back up, and it creates a siphon and basically sucks it right through that trap, like similar to the trap in your sink or under your sink.
All right, thanks.
So Chuck, has this been, has this gone through final engineering, or would the grant cover engineering and construction, or just construction?
The grant covers engineering and construction. Everything's conceptual right now. It would have to be designed and permitted, and we need a general permit to go through the water and waterway and all that, so.
What's the timeline for the grant award, and then if awarded, what's the timeline for design, and then do you have to go out to bid for this?
Yes. The, I believe the grants are due in, I want to say, late spring, early summer is when they're going to announce some. So by the time you get, you know, a signed contract with DCD and everything, it'll probably be designed maybe by the end of the year and probably bid the following year and construct it in the summertime, which is ideally when we want to do it.
And then in terms of the patch that was made, is there any concern about that overflowing again in the interim until we can repair the segment?
Well, first of all, Public Works is aware of it, and they just keep it on their list of things to take a look at every, every month or every couple weeks or whatever, but as long as we don't get those high storms through there, there's not a concern. If we get a real severe storm where you get a high flow of water through there, we'll take a look at it and make sure it didn't move.
Is this a combined sewer?
No, no, just sanitary.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Chuck, if my math is right, 250 homes, that's about, on the average, 10,000 gallons a day?
Yeah, it's probably a little bit more than that, I mean-
It's a lot, a lot of flow.
A lot of flow, yeah. A lot of flow. Probably, you know, going through that pipe, it's probably a third to a half of the pipe. So.
A minor point of information, I'm looking at the dates on this, 2019 and 2021, but I'm looking over where I live, and my street is not there, so in your database, you might want to add Lawrence Road to, off of, sorry, Spring House Lane off of Lawrence Road in northwest, or up and left of the drainage area.
Well, I appreciate you pointing that out, and I thought everything was covered, but it's always something.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just was curious, do the residents in this area experience any flooding that could be improved upon during this project, or are they okay?
There, again, there's a lot of, I'm going to use the word flooding, but there's a lot of flooding in when we get those real intense rains over short duration. I mean, what's the areas around there? Some of those streets that border the park do get heavy rains, they get some, people get water in their basement, there's some sewer backups, that's the primary cause of a lot of the stuff when it rains, is water getting into the sanitary sewer system one way or the other, and it backs up in people's houses. It just inundates the system and backs up. So that's something that's on the township's radar, too, but that's not an easy task to identify a and I.
So there's nothing that could be done as part of this project to, like, increase the size of how you're handling the water here, to prep for anything in the future, or it just doesn't make sense?
Well, it wouldn't be within the scope of work on this project, and to do something to either enlarge or redirect the creek or do something requires a lot of permitting and requires a lot of study.
Okay, I understand.
And we don't, we don't want to do something that's going to cause more problems either.
Right. Okay, thanks. What's the plan for replacing the pipe if we don't receive the grant?
Good question. Probably, from a practical standpoint, we'll go in there and actually line everything and line it with a real heavy pipe, or depending on the budget, we may be able to go in there and do, and just do spare work, you know, take out the pipe within the creek and replace it on either side.
Are we confident, or how much time, is the existing repair, is the existing repair going to last in your-
Well, I mean, it's not like, we didn't put a Band-Aid on it, it's more like a, you know, big long Band-Aid. It spans the joint by probably five feet on either side, so it's not going to fall apart tomorrow, but like I said, when we get those real intense rains and this thing is subject to potential movement from the high flows, we're going to have to keep an eye on it and make sure there's nothing that's an issue. You know, typically, you can line a pipe and it could last forever. The problem in this particular case is it's at a joint between two dissimilar types of pipes, so there's different diameters, there's different roughnesses, and there's, you know, it's just not ideal.
But we're safe for the moment.
For the moment, yes.
Hope the moment lasts.
Me, too.
Till the cavalry comes in the form of this grant. Any other discussion?
I just had one more question, and this one might just be a silly question because I don't understand what's happening, but the existing concrete, and then you see in the picture, there's the other concrete sort of a little bit upstream from it, are they acting as dams to stop the water, or is the pipe just encased in concrete and the water's flowing underneath?
I think what happened over time is obviously the creek kind of eroded a little bit, and I would venture to guess that pipe was covered at some point when it was installed.
Okay, so I guess what I was just asking is, whatever you're doing to solve the problem hopefully won't create like a standing water when the water level drops in the middle, like a little pond?
Oh, I, yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah.
I mean, obviously, this needs done, I just was curious if you were going to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, and if you look in the picture, there's some, there's some hay bales back there, which was meant to, you know, stop the flow of sewage down the creek, and I think that's part of the reason that you see that the water's just damming up in there.
Okay, because I misread that as a more permanent, like, second barrier, and that's why I wasn't sure what was going on.
No, they're just temporary.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chuck? Chuck, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item, the Lawson Avenue-
We need a motion, right?
That one's postponed.
To make a recommendation.
We need a recommendation.
For the grant.
Right. Then I'll entertain a motion to recommend the grant, that the grant go forward, we recommend that to the Board of Commissioners. Is there a motion?
Can I amend that to indicate that the project is in compliance with the Township's Comprehensive Plan?
It's, Marge, it's not an amendment, that can be Angelo's motion.
All right, well then, let me restate that Planning Commission recommends, or agrees that the proposed project to rebuild the sanitary sewer main crossing at Naylor's Run is consistent with the goals identified in the Township's Comprehensive Plan, and the Commission supports the application for funding of this project.
There a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, is all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The subdivision at 774 Lawson is postponed to our next, to the April 13 meeting. Next item is item five on the original agenda, now item four, ordinance amendment review. What's proposed is a revision to the existing language to require the installation of sidewalks for all plans, all plans, subject to a SALDO subdivision and land development approval. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to ask Kelly, did we go through the rest of the ordinance? Because I noted that the change to the streets and sidewalks had a former requirement that streets, I'm sorry, the sidewalks are six feet, was it? And then the SALDO says four feet, so are there any, do we double check to make sure that there's no other conflicting requirements when it comes to the minimum width for sidewalks? So both of those sections are amended as part of this ordinance, obviously, we're only truly reviewing the one from the SALDO, but Chapter 157 is also amended in this ordinance, and then there's also a resolution for design standards that will possibly need to be amended as well, needs to be amended as well, period, but to get everything on the same page and nonconflicting, that will need to be reviewed as well, but since this is just the ordinance section for the SALDO, this is, you know, kind of the first step in getting everybody on the same page.
And we don't have anything in zoning that would designate minimum sidewalks, so this covers us?
No, we don't talk about sidewalks at all in zoning.
Sorry?
The zoning ordinance doesn't, doesn't regulate sidewalks.
Maybe it should. Okay, very good, thank you.
It's in a different chapter, isn't it?
So, right, so we're reviewing the change to the subdivision and land development ordinance, which is Chapter 160. The ordinance, or the chapter for streets and sidewalks is 157, which is under the Public Works Department, so sidewalks really are not, not regulated in the zoning ordinance.
So the genesis of this is some review that's been undertaken, and you're trying to streamline and conform?
Yes, but also-
Or make something new?
But also, there has been quite, as you have, probably have noticed over the past year or so, most of the subdivisions or land developments that come in that do not already provide sidewalks, request a waiver. The Board of Commissioners wanted to strengthen the language in the subdivision of land development ordinance. development ordinance to require them instead of saying where, the exact language is in here, sidewalks shall be required where in the opinion of the Board of the Town Commissioners, heavy pedestrian traffic will result, or where pedestrian safety requires such sidewalks. They want to change it to read sidewalk shall be provided for all existing and proposed streets along any existing or proposed street on which a subdivision or land development abuts, sidewalk shall be constructed to accommodate the sidewalk curbing and verge requirements of the subsection E below.
So this is at the impetus of the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
And we're simply promulgating their direction and intent?
Yes.
Well, Kelly, would it be accurate to say that the existing ordinance puts the burden on the township to insist on sidewalks, and the change puts the burden on the developer to require, to require them?
Sure.
It requires them, and the, the, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Whereas the, yeah, previously it was where the township feels that heavy pedestrian traffic would be a result of the project, now it's a requirement, either way, I mean, a developer can always request a waiver from this, this requirement, the subdivision and land development ordinance from the Board of Commissioners, but this way they're saying, we're requiring it, tell us why you shouldn't, and instead of, yeah.
Is there anything that addresses the consistent argument that sidewalks to nowhere don't make sense?
This is what the Board of Commissioners were trying to kind of close the gap on with this language by just requiring it across the board, so there weren't any questions of whether it was required or not.
And then wave out in unique situations where it's not reasonable.
Correct, yes.
Hmm, and, and Kelly, in your view, what was, what was driving this?
All of, every single subdivision coming in and requesting the waiver.
Everybody asks not to have to build a sidewalk, and we generally say, okay, and then the Township Board of Supervisors essentially has to approve it even though many of them want to see the sidewalks constructed. The township has a problem with no sidewalks in many places, the only way those happen are when there are subdivisions.
The, the only recent subdivision where we said we agree with waiver was the one on Darby Road, every other subdivision that's come through in the past couple of years, I think the Plan Commission's been pretty consistent with requiring sidewalks. The Board of Commissioners are the ones that would make a decision to say whether or not they agree with our recommendation or not, so.
I feel like we missed it at the, at the subdivision in Brinford a year ago.
On, on county.
But in, in any case.
That was the sidewalk to nowhere issue?
Mm-hmm.
And also drainage issues that the neighbors complained of.
So with the sidewalk to nowheres, I can remember us discussing a fee, is that something that we've discussed a fee in lieu of for, and should that verbiage show up anywhere in here? Not that we want to give people a loophole to get out of it, but just if it is truly a sidewalk to nowhere, they could still collect a fee to connect a sidewalk somewhere else in the township?
So what I would like to do, well frankly, is not make any changes to the SALDO or the zoning ordinance at this time at all, because we're working on the comp plan, and once the comp plan is done, both of those things are going to be amended in their entirety. So, um, that said, the Commissioners are very, very, feel very, very strongly about putting this language in so that we don't continue with subdivisions that continue to request these waivers, because that is something that's been a, a problem for every application that's come in. So that is absolutely something that we can, and we've, we've discussed addressing, you know, as part of the comp plan, and then as part of the subsequent, the ordinances that will take place after it's adopted, which is something we can absolutely look into then, but not something that I want to, I, I just personally don't want to make a ton of changes when everything's going to be completely revised, hopefully very soon.
Julia, I've seen a lot of times where a board would be inclined to give the waiver to construct the sidewalks, but as a condition of the waiver would require the developer to cost out the construction estimate of those sidewalks and then contribute that as a fee in lieu to some designated account, so it's not that you can't collect a fee in lieu without it expressly saying so, but to Kelly's point, we're going to be doing a whole suite of redesigns, so we don't want to start doing too much too soon, but it makes sense to make this particular change, it's a small change, and it does do a lot to strengthen, instead of saying, well, if we think it, it should go there, then maybe you should put it there, to just saying, you have to put it in, period, end of story, and then they would need to convince the board why they couldn't for whatever reason. So in the event that there's a, you know, mature tree line, or a big grade at, at the roadway, or something like that, some topography, that could justify why they wouldn't want to put sidewalks in at that time, otherwise it's, I, I think that this is, what's that?
I'd like the motion to approve.
Maggie, wasn't there also a suggestion that, I think you had said that the developer can put money in escrow, or in, in a guarantee, so that if sidewalks, I think we talked about that on county line?
Yeah, and so.
If, if the other sidewalks get developed for some reason in the neighboring properties, and it's no longer a sidewalk to nowhere, the money would be there to, or approximately be there to put in a sidewalk later.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely different financing options for doing fees in lieu, but that wouldn't be the, the role of the subdivision ordinance at this time.
I, I, I have a concern, does this paragraph now say that curbing is also required? I, I don't know, if we're talking about sidewalks, why curbing is even, even in there?
It says sidewalks should be constructed to accommodate the sidewalk curbing and verge requirements, um, I suspect that maybe curbing was part of the intent, I did not write this, our, our solicitor did, um, but, uh, again, if curbing isn't appropriate for whatever reason, then, you know, waivers can be requested as well.
I, I would suggest that the wording be changed to read that sidewalk shall be constructed in accordance with the requirements of sec, subsection E below.
I'm sorry, Angelo, in accordance with?
In accordance with the requirements of subsection E below.
So subsection E speaks first.
So take out the word to accommodate the sidewalk curbing and verge, and replace it with shall be constructed in accordance with the requirements of subsection E below.
Does subsection, does subsection E relate to the sidewalk?
Yeah, it talks about the width of the sidewalk, how far behind the curb and things like that.
And the verge, so the sidewalk width and the verge are in subsection E?
Verge just means to mine it with, I think, verge doesn't.
Well, to, to me, a verge is a, the landscaped area between a curb and sidewalk.
Okay, well, subsection E talks about a four-foot grass strip between the curb and sidewalk.
Yeah, that's the verge.
Right, actually, technically, from a legal standpoint, if you get rid of the words, then you don't run the risk of setting up a conflict between these descriptors and the actual words in the subsection, so Angelo's spot on with making this change, in my opinion.
Wait, I mean, should we just say sidewalk shall be constructed in accordance with design standards of this chapter?
Well, in accordance with the requirements of subsection E below, I don't have a problem with referencing subsection A.
I just want to double check that subsection E says what we need it to say.
Yeah, it talks about the width of the sidewalk, and there should be a grass plot four feet wide between the curb and the sidewalk.
And, and, wouldn't it also have to reference 157 as having the requirements for sidewalks?
157 is amended in this ordinance to reference the SALDO.
Does it say anything about, does, does E or 157 say anything about when an existing sidewalk is not the same width as the new sidewalk that would be required, so that they can be uniform?
Uh, does not.
No, I know what you're saying, I just, I'm, I'm just pulling up the code to see what subsection E reads.
Yeah. You want the SALDO or the zoning? That's there, it should be in here.
I can read that subsection to anybody if that's.
I would say I just, I just pulled it up, so sub, okay, so subdivision land development ordinance, Chapter 160, Section 5B, make sure I'm in the right spot, 5B, yeah, general design requirements, 5B, 4E, reads the minimum width of all sidewalks shall be four feet. At corners and pedestrian street crossing points, sidewalks shall be extended to the curb line with an adequate apron area for anticipated pedestrian traffic. The thickness and type of construction of all sidewalks shall be in accordance with the standards established by the township. Where sidewalks are required, a minimum four-foot wide grass plot shall be required between the sidewalk and the back of curb, so that to me is the verge. If the provision of sidewalks requires the destruction or removal of valuable trees, consideration shall be given to the retention of such valuable trees. Where driveways cross sidewalks, concrete apron shall be provided from the sidewalk to the back of the curb. So subsection E addresses the width of the sidewalk, which is four feet, and the width of the verge, which is four feet. And then subsection B for A, which is not for consideration for change, but that is where it requires curbs, so I think because we already have subsection B for A, saying curb shall be provided for all existing and proposed streets, I agree Angelo, just in support, just another thing in support of why we should just get rid of the sidewalk curbing and verge requirements, so to Angelo's point, I think the recommendation should be, the language should be changed to sidewalk shall be constructed, would you say, in accordance with the requirements of subsection E below. And then we have curbing covered in another section, and then the sidewalk width and the verge width are in the subsection E, so that should be, that should cover us. And then moving forward, subsection E should get scrapped in its entirety because that's kind of garbage, and when we rewrite the whole SALDO, it'll be better all around, but that works.
I, I guess for the time being, I mean, all we have to do is require curbs and sidewalks in all subdivisions and land developments, period.
Yeah.
And let the applicant make the argument to the Board of Commissioners of whether or not they approve a waiver.
Right.
So it's, it kind of makes things easy for us.
That works, okay, all right, so.
I don't know, in light of the fact that the, well, I have to take issue with the notion that if we put it in now, then it'll all get rewritten later, these things do kind of have a life of their own, and once approved, it, it's going to be harder to change. That's one concern. The other concerns are, we have had that issue, we have had real issues where engineering concerns, concerns of slope, as well as the sidewalk to nowhere, as well as drainage, as well as trees, and sometimes safety, putting a sidewalk where it can be more dangerous than no sidewalk, so I don't know, I feel like I'd like to give this a little more thought, and in addition, I prefer to have this, be able to read these different sections at my leisure, just to be sure that what was drafted here is, works, and doesn't create any more problems. I think I would also like to see something that, and again, I'd, I'd like to think about it a little more, that specifies the, maybe some conditions for either waiver or deferment or modification of the requirement at the recommendation of the township engineer, possibly, or the planning commission, but.
So that all of that's.
Something that gives the, the developer and the township, and the Commissioners, I don't know, I, today, I, today I looked at a few other townships to see what they do, and it was sometimes hard to find, but I didn't see any, I saw several, and, and they didn't, none of them said it's absolutely mandatory.
Okay, so if you look at the third whereas in the ordinance, whereas the board desires to amend 160-5B for C and Chapter 157 Streets and Sidewalks, 157.
I'm sorry, which paragraph are you on?
The third whereas, 157-1, to require the installation of sidewalks of the subdivision plan or land development plan design requirement unless such requirement is modified by the Board of Commissioners due to a hardship pursuant to 160-10, which is where it allows for waivers based on whatever that hardship is, whether it be the grade or what have you, so that, that section's already, already in the code.
Hardship's not the same as environmental or.
No, a hardship in this case because it's not a zoning hardship, so we're not talking about a hardship that's related to a variance.
A variance.
It's a waiver that's able to be granted by the Board of Commissioners for a subdivision and land development project.
So, yeah, SALDO waivers are different than variances, so it's not the same thing as a hardship, so all we're doing is we're going from the ordinance that says that you can put sidewalks in to you must put sidewalks in, which just helps us in the interim to strengthen the requirement that we want sidewalks, because I think this board unanimously votes in support of sidewalks and doesn't recommend waivers, so it doesn't take, the change though that's being recommended doesn't take away the option to request a waiver if that's the case.
If I might add to what Maggie said, David, I heard you say two different things. One was content focused, and, and to me, that's assumed by the process under which an applicant would request a waiver, and they would give their substantive reasons, such as any one of the things you mentioned. The other piece you're talking about is procedural, and that's what you're turning to now with modifications of the hardship. I'm not sure how important it is that we have delineated upfront different categories of potential waiver, as long as you have the umbrella of the ability to request waiver, I think you're covering the ball field.
Well, as I'm reading it, as I say, reading it is helpful, it, it says, the whereas that was read, third paragraph of the whereas, says unless such requirement is modified by the Board of Commissioners due to a hardship pursuant to 160-10.
You have to take a look at 160-10 because it talks not only about hardships, where it also talks about impracticality and things like that.
That's exactly what I'm looking at, I'm looking at it, I'm reading it.
And if, if you remember, more recently, again, we've required that when the applicant requests a waiver, that they provide a justification for the waiver, it's no longer, you know, we want a waiver because you've done it in the past, they have to have a legitimate reason for asking for the waiver, and based upon the information the applicant provides, we make a judgment based on that, so I, I don't see any issue here, I mean, generally sidewalks are required, but if the applicant has a real reason why they shouldn't be, then we might agree with him, or we may not agree with him. I, I think what we're looking to get rid of is the sidewalk to nowhere, you know, at some point in time, you got to put sidewalks in, and you got to start somewhere, I guess, and this gives us, it eliminates that excuse, in my opinion.
Well, I, I don't think I agree.
If there are trees and other environmental issues where we think logically it doesn't make sense to put sidewalks in, then we would recommend that waiver to the Commissioner.
Well, 160-10. is not limited to hardship. But the whereas clause is limited to hardship. That's another problem I have. So 160-10 refers to, gives the possibility of a modification. If any mandatory provisions of the regulations contained in this chapter, which is what this would become, are shown by the applicant developer to the satisfaction of the board of commissioners to be unreasonable, which I think would bring in impracticality, or to cause undue hardship, or the applicant shows an alternate standard can provide equal or better results, may grant a, the board of commissioners may grant a modification to that provision. Which is, to me, a modification's a little different than a waiver, but maybe that's.
Could, could I propose perhaps then?
If I could just finish the thought. So hardship is quite different than a than an impracticality or unreasonableness. So I, I just don't feel the wording is adequate to capture what it is.
Okay.
That the board of commissioners should be deciding.
The board is looking for a recommendation on the amended language of chapter 160. I don't know that the solicitor is necessarily looking for input on his ordinance language itself. So I can certainly bring that to his attention, but if tonight we could just kind of focus on the amended language of chapter 160, I think that's what the board was requesting.
Well, then why are we here?
Because we're revising the requirement for sidewalks. We're not required, we're not revising the conditions under which a waiver would be granted. The whereas has nothing to do with the amendment to the ordinance.
When concerns were raised about the amendment, the answer was that the whereas clauses will take care of that. So I was responding to the whereas clauses. I, I feel it's, this could use a little more thought and perhaps a little different wording to make it a little clearer what the developer needs to do. I, I don't think the board or we should rush to say, let's just mandate sidewalks without a little more attention to the language. So I would move the table and perhaps you could have that conversation with the solicitor before our next meeting and we could pass it at our next meeting.
Do you think that maybe we could motion, that we could recommend that this move forward, but that we recommend also that the township solicitor confirm that the language of the ordinance is also meeting the general intent of our discussion here? Because none of us is the legal counsel representing the township. And so we could all, you know, propose a bunch of modifications to the whereases.
I don't, no, the whereases simply provide justification, the actual change to the ordinance, what we need to make a motion on. And there's only two sections here that are being changed. Angelo provided, I think, a really sound recommendation of a modification to the language. So I actually would like to make a motion, if I may, to recommend adoption of the zoning, I'm sorry, not zoning, of the ordinance amendment, subject to the modifications to section one of the ordinance amendment in accordance with Angelo's suggested language. Marge, do you have that language or do you want me to read it again?
I'll watch it on the TV.
Okay. So that's my recommend, that's my motion.
So could you say what the change is, please?
Sure. So Angelo's language, so under section one of the ordinance amendment would read instead, sidewalks shall be provided for all existing and proposed streets. Along any existing or proposed street on which a subdivision or land development abuts, sidewalks shall be constructed in accordance with the requirements of subsection E below.
Does it mention anything about the option for waivers in that language?
Waivers are inherent in the subdivision and land development ordinance already. We don't need to separately reference them.
It is taken care of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, again, I, I sense in that question the same issue that I'm identifying, which is when you have a whereas, that becomes the legislative intent of the statute. I don't see any point in saying, let's pass it as is, subject to the proposed amendment, which I agree with. And say, well, we'll pass it, but then we'll talk to the solicitor because he's the attorney. I think we have to read the words and understand what these words mean and make our recommendation accordingly. If we're, I would propose another amendment.
So in most cases, when there's an amendment to an ordinance, I don't send this commission, the entire ordinance. I didn't write, I didn't make the amendments to this ordinance. Normally I would just send a red light copy of the existing and proposed. So this board would normally not even see this ordinance in its draft state. That is what we, you know, send, what we, you know, will draft in-house and with, with the support of the solicitor. That then goes to the board of commissioners. So the board of commissioners are not asking, not asking for recommendations of the ordinance itself, but simply the language that's being amended.
Simply the language as?
That's being amended in the ordinance.
Are you saying we should just vote it up or down?
I'm saying that you, that they are looking for a recommendation of 160-5B for C.
And if, if we feel there should be an amendment, such as the one that was just moved, we can make that as a recommendation.
Absolutely, yes.
We don't amend.
Right. You're making a recommendation for that amendment. Correct.
Well, then I would recommend another amendment, which is that it, that the ordinance includes an explicit statement saying it is subject to waiver, that the, that the rationale, the whereases be changed to make clear that it includes all the provisions of 160-10A, rather than just hardship. Because hardships really is very different. I understand it's not the same as a variance.
I'm just saying that that's not, it's not going to be codified so into the ordinance.
I think the whereas language should be modified. I recommend to the board of commissioners that the mod, that that language be modified because that becomes the justification for the rule and the basis for, let me finish. And I also recommend, since we're not passing anything, we're not doing anything and that the, that there be an express statement that the the requirement is subject to waiver, deferment, or modification. And I would, I would spell that out further and I recommend that this go back to the solicitor so that it not be such a black and white requirement. It can be a requirement that puts, it's, it's not that hard. You can make a requirement on the developer, put the burden on the developer to come forward and explain why it should be waived, the requirement should be waived.
But do you think that's?
But to modify the rule, I don't know. It just seems like an extreme thing to put it in as a absolute requirement when we already know that we have issues with slopes, trees, drainage, the natural environment and the aesthetic of a, of a.
And we might not even be able to predict all of those. We might not even be able to predict all of those things right now, but does this have to come back to the planning commission for review?
Is which?
Respectfully, David, the, the ordinance, there are those scenarios that you outline, which is why the subdivision and land development ordinance has always enabled a developer to ask for the waivers if there are instances of that. So the reason why there's waivers that can be granted by the board is that it gives the board the latitude to consider those externalities and waive those requirements in the land development plan. And it doesn't put additional burden on the developer to have to go get like a variance. So that's why you have the, the waivers as a means of relief through the Saldo. And that's already existing. So I don't think that we need to make any additional modifications because the board has not proposed an ordinance amendment to address how waivers are handled. The ordinance amendment is to simply change the language to go from a, you should put sidewalks in, to a, you shall put sidewalks in. That's really the substantive change that we're asked to address tonight.
Here, if I could just add.
Excuse, just one clarification. Is the modification at 160-10, modifications due to hardship, what's considered the waiver provision?
So 160-10 would be the waiver provisions, but that, that is an existing ordinance section that is not being proposed to be changed.
I understand. I just wanted to be sure that when they say modification due to hardship, that's what you're referring to is the waiver section?
Yeah, well, that's.
Any other place where it says someone can apply for a waiver?
Well, it's inherent that each section of the Saldo can get a waiver. Section 160-10, my understanding of it is that this is the rationale as to why a developer can request, or like the rationale as to why they would be eligible for a waiver.
akin to what.
The complex for me.
akin to what Angelo suggested in the text of the proposed amendment. Can we simply recommend where it reads in the whereas is modify the board of commissioners, cross out due to hardship pursuant to 610, it speaks for itself. Then you don't get into any of these semantics issues and it doesn't, in my mind, change anything substantively here.
What would you be, what would you be changing?
You just delete the words due to a hardship. We recommend that as well as the language change in the proposed amendment itself. And I, I just want to add, I think it's, we have to be really careful roles and responsibilities here because I know you're a very careful, diligent attorney.
Just here as a, as a citizen.
Right, but as a citizen as well, but you're very careful and diligent. But I don't think we should be putting ourselves in the shoes of the attorney for the township in terms of what language they want to draft in terms of warehouse clauses or whatnot. Our role is to deal with these two proposed, you know, texts, specific amendments. And yes, as citizens, I'm suggesting that they cross out due to hardship because you pointed out after all that thorough review that that might create an ambiguity. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah. Yeah, except for the part that says it's not our job to look at the language and make our own independent determination as to what the language says based on our reading of the words and understanding of the codes. That's why we have a planning commission.
I spoke too broadly. What I was really trying to get at is, as Maggie was saying, we're passing on this text and we don't want the tail to wag the dog. And we can comment. And if we crossed out those four words, I think that really gets to the heart of what you're trying to say. I couldn't be misunderstanding.
To help? Yeah. Thank you. So I, I don't know if formal motions, motions to amend are required since we're not in the position to amend. But in terms of the recommendation.
If you're making a recommendation to approve the proposed language subject to, you know, that the amendment previously mentioned, we can certainly do that. Yeah.
So I already made my motion, but it hasn't been seconded.
I'll second it.
And Lou, were you also making, can we do two motions at once or do we do them one at a time?
Were you in agreement about crossing out those words in the warehouse clause?
I am not.
You're not in agreement? Okay. Well, unless I have other support for that, then we're ready to.
I mean, I think it's a good idea too, but I'm not sure if that it's really in our purview. And I think I've already been myself clear that my position is that this is in the township solicitor's court. So like, I assume that they're paying attention and especially after this kind of meeting, the township solicitor is watching this and hearing this debate. So I would expect that, that feedback is picked up by the township solicitor, whether or not it shows up in a recommendation. And, and I'll be looking for that in the board of commissioners meeting.
Well, I would just like to say for the record that township solicitors are ex, I'm sure they're excellent lawyers. But we have an independent role under the municipality's planning code and in our township. And it's our job to read the words and if we can either disagree with the concept, or we can disagree with the way it's worded, or we can agree with both those things. We have to play an independent role to do that and not simply defer to the commissioners. That's not why they, that's not what they want us to do. Nor is it, maybe they like that, but I don't think that's what they want. And I don't think that's our role. And it's not our job to defer to the commissioners or to the solicitor, but to make our own independent judgment. So I, I just want to be on record on that. I think that's extremely important for all our work in the future.
Can I make a suggestion? Okay, that we, as part of our recommendation to the board, as far as the amendment is concerned, we, we suggest that they modify the language in the third whereas to read unless such requirement is modified by the board of commissioners as provided for in section 160-10.
Second?
You okay with that? I mean, basically we're saying, we like this language for the ordinance revision and would you consider changing the whereas to read this way? Okay, Meg?
Yes.
That's all right. So I'll further or make an amendment to Maggie's motion that we suggested to board of commissioners that they amend the third whereas to read, the final sentence to read, unless such requirement is modified by the board of commissioners as provided for in paragraph 160-10.
And we have a second?
Oh, it was the second.
That was, that was the second.
With the second modification. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Kelly, what is the next step then? This is then, you will then do what?
I will send the recommendation to the board of commissioners for consideration at their next. Oh, actually, this is an ordinance, so it needs a public hearing. So I will, you know, set up a public hearing with the board of commissioners to review the amended changes, followed by first and second reading of the ordinance at the regular meetings.
And the public hearing would take place when?
I don't know. I'd have to, I have to set it up with them. Generally, it's prior to a work session meeting. But whether they would want it on for next month, I would imagine that they probably would. That's my best guess. So not this following week because that's the regular meeting, but I'd say the likely hearing date would be prior to the April meeting, April work session meeting.
And you'll also be discussing the amendments that we
Yes.
recommend
Correct.
with the solicitor?
Yes.
Okay. Kelly, does this have to go to the county planning commission?
Indeed, and it already has.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question. Thank you, Angelo.
I think the next item on our agenda is the minutes. Is there any discussion of the, the minutes of October 13, 2022, and October 27, 2022?
That's the wrong one.
Wrong one.
November 10.
Sorry. The minutes are of the planning commission meeting of November 10, 2022, and December 1, 2022.
Well, that should be the 8th, I think. December 10.
December 8.
December 8, yeah. The 1st is the first Thursday. The 8th was the second Thursday.
December 8, 2022. And is.
You should have a copy of them up there.
And you sent them around today.
And you have the hard copies. And you have the hard copies.
Is there, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted today.
For which?
For both. If there's an issue, then we'll separate them.
I think we should separate them.
All right, then. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 10, 2022?
Yes. Motion to approve minutes of November 10, 2022.
Second? There's a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes of November 10, 2022, please say aye.
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 I'll abstain. I was absent.
Likewise abstained.
And.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the December 8, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion of that motion? All in favor? Say aye.
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 I'll abstain. I was absent.
I abstained as well.
With two abstentions, I hear no, anybody opposed? With that, the both minutes are adopted. I don't know if it was clear, Margie, but on my, on that previous motion, I did not say aye. I abstained. The motion for the to approve the change in the ordinance.
Ordinance.
Is there anything else?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's any other new business.
Motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, on the new business front, Kelly, do we know who has been appointed to the ad hoc committee on the comprehensive plan? I can report that we don't all know the minutes of the, of the meetings of the commissioners. I believe it was the January meeting, the commissioners passed a motion, essentially as was recommended by this planning commission, to reconstitute the, to appoint an ad hoc committee to revise, on the recommendation of the planning commission, to revise the comprehensive plan draft as to form and substance.
So the board.
And then they were, they also reported at a later meeting, they were going to appoint the committee, but, and that leads to my question.
The Board of Commissioners put together what they are calling a finishing committee of a few members of the planning commission, a few members of the Board of Commissioners, myself, and the township manager.
Do you know the names?
Off the top of my head, no, because we met once. And it was a week or so ago. So no, I do not. Off the top of my head, remember who was included.
Could you send me those? Send an email?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Any other new business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.